Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our township meeting.
We...
Yeah, you can start.
You've spent five weeks, Steve, you forgot your job.
Committeeman Kennas, thank you.
I started early, but then we started late, so.
Welcome.
Through the schedule.
And to make it official.
Uh-oh, now we're official.
Township Lacy Caucus Meeting, September 9th, 2021. I'll read a statement, we will rise and salute our flag. Adequate notice this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press in the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, proclamation for Hunger Action Month, very important item. I'll read the proclamation and ask the parties to come forward. Whereas the Township of Lacy is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to combat hunger, and whereas the Township of Lacy is committed to working with Fulfill, formerly the food bank of Monmouth and Ocean Counties, to educate people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues, and whereas more than 215,000 individuals, including 70,000 children in Monmouth and Ocean Counties, now rely on food provided by Fulfill and its partners since the beginning of the pandemic, and whereas the unemployment level is the highest it has ever been in the history of the state, and the poverty level for family of four is $25,926, and 9.2% of families live below that level. And whereas since the start of the pandemic, Fulfill has provided 9.1 million meals to Ocean County residents in need, and whereas due to the pandemic, one in every six people in Monmouth and Ocean Counties received emergency food from Fulfill and their network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, and community organizations. And whereas food banks across the country, include, excuse me, yes, across the country, including Fulfill, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and attention to encourage involvement in efforts to end hunger in their local community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Peter Kiratola, Mayor of Lacy Township, do hereby recognize September as Hunger Action Month in Lacy Township and call this observance to attention for our citizens. Thank you. Is there a member of our food bank here?
Yes.
Mr. Crowes, please come forward. The microphone is yours, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing awareness to hunger in our community, and we thank you guys for everything you're doing to help us get the word out that hunger still exists and we're trying to combat the situation. We do expect a pretty big spike this fall, and we're going to do everything we can. And if there's anything that you need from us, just let us know, and we're here to help anybody who needs it.
Listen, if you need us, call us. We'll post some of your information on our website. We want to get it out to our people, and I'm sure other municipalities will do the same. Thanks to my colleagues here, we have a proclamation I'd like to give to you right now.
Thank you very much.
If you have somebody to take a picture.
Do you want to take a picture, bud?
Yeah.
Bob will take it, and he'll post it in the newspaper, too. Right there, that gentleman. Pete's coming down. Thanks.
I'll read the proclamation and ask the family to come forward. Whereas the Lacy Township Committee wishes to recognize the character and talent and hard work exemplified by Lacy Township resident Ava Colasanti for her outstanding athletic performance in American Ninja Warrior, where some of the most elite athletes in the country compete on the world's most difficult obstacle course. And whereas Ava first began training at a small gym in Tom's River called Base Camp, where she excelled in competition for three years. And whereas Ava joined the National Ninja League, where she continued to excel and qualify for the World Championships in February 2019. And whereas Ava continued to train five days a week at Base Camp and in her home garage, joined by the Lacy High School Track Team, and in July 2019, joined a high-level ninja training gym called Center Court Club and Sports. And whereas in 2019, Ava also joined UNX, which is a league where they compete against adults, where Ava came in first in her very first UNX competition. And whereas after a three-month break due to COVID and an injury, Ava was able to rehab and start her training back at Center Court. In September 2020, joined the Elite Women's Division for the National Ninja League, winning five elite championships. And whereas in November, Ava honed her skills even further by joining a climbing gym in Brick, and in December was invited to submit an application for American Ninja Warrior. And whereas Ava's attitude, pride, determination, and hard work had earned her national and statewide recognition and the right to compete in American Ninja Warrior in April 2021 in Tacoma. Whereas Ava was invited to compete in American Ninja Warrior for season 13 as a 16-year-old in Tacoma, where she qualified to move on to the semifinal round on August 23rd, where she flew through and completed four obstacles before her run ended at the drop zone, but with a time fast enough to qualify to advance her to the national finals in Vegas. Whereas Ava appeared on American Ninja Warrior for the national championship competition, which aired on August 30th, however, she was knocked out by the jumping spider. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Township Committee and the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, that special recognition and commendation be given to our very own Ava Colasanti for her outstanding athletic achievement on a national stage in American Ninja Warrior. Ava, congratulations, come forward, please. I don't want you to be shy. Get your microphone for a couple minutes. You have anything you want to say to anybody?
Thank you so much, everyone, for the love and support. It really means a lot. I'm definitely going to keep training hard, and hopefully I'll hit some buzzers for next year.
So what got you involved in this? This is like, I mean, I could never do that, but like, what interested you and how did you?
Um, so when I was 10, I started training, but I always saw the show on TV, and I just thought it was super fun. And I just told myself the first day I went to my college cop base camp that I wanted to be on the show one day. So I just trained super hard and set my mind to it. And I didn't realize I'd become this fast, but it's been awesome.
Well, these gentlemen are going to be appointed as cops tonight. You could probably give them a run for the runny because of fitness, I'm sure. Yeah, you might have to do some training for that.
Thank you.
We're all very, very proud of you, and I'll tell you, I've known you since you were essentially in diapers. And whenever I want to talk to Committeeman Kennas, my good friend, and we're at your house on a social visit, I just yell over the fence, and he doesn't answer. But it's just great to see that you made national acclaim, and we're all really, really proud of you.
Thank you so much.
So we have this proclamation, and is there anybody that'd like to say anything?
The dreaded spider. That dreaded jumping spider.
Yeah, I did that, as soon as I got back to my gym, I actually got a first try. But yeah.
So, once the cameras were on, were you nervous? Like, once you knew it was live?
Yeah, so it changes the dynamics.
Definitely changes. A lot of meltdown.
Well, we got this.
The mayor wants a photo op.
They're going to be looking at you, not me. Is this yours, frame or fillers?
As you wish. My flex.
Yeah, Pete, is your, your muscles match that Pete's?
I'm not flexed. Good seeing you, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three, presentation from county for the CARES Act Rental Assistance. Stephanie Hudson.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate the ocean visit, and we appreciate the time you're giving us to just make the county and the town aware of the program that's currently available. I do have some colleagues out in Foyer there with a table with all the information for the RERAP program, which is the county grant program, which allows for $26,610 of Mac rent and three months going forward. That money goes directly to the landlords, and the application is digital. The RERAP representative is at the Ocean County branch, the Lacy Library, and that's on Wednesdays from 10 to 12. We also have other information out front of the other county programs that are available, so if anybody wants to go out and stop the table and pick that up, that's fine. If not, you can contact our department at 732-504-0700, extension 64360, or stop in at 118 Washington Street in Tom's River at the Civil Intake, and we can give you all the information that you need. Okay?
Now, is this a joint application between the landlord and the tenant?
Yes, but if there's not cooperation between the two, the RERAP program will work to try to get that money going forward.
And this goes to the landlord versus going to the tenant?
Yes, absolutely.
And then, let's say that there's more than $26,000 that's owed to the landlord. The balance that's due, is the landlord, he's just out of the money, or does the tenant have to pay it up, or can a judgment be issued against the tenant?
There are multiple options, but any money that isn't paid can be sought through a different court, which is what we call the DC Court, and there's no jurisdictional limit for how much you can win a request. So even if the tenant's case is dismissed, through what the Department of Community Affairs now has with the income amounts that you can file a certification, have the case dismissed, that money can then be sought through that program, through our courts, through a motion for that money, and there's no limit. So if someone owes $30,000, you can go into our DC Court and file for that amount.
And is there a deadline for applications? Is there a closing date for this?
Not as of right now, there is no deadline.
Great. And if you can leave me some brochures behind?
I actually have a bunch for you.
Oh, perfect.
Both in English and in Spanish.
Oh, great, thank you, thank you.
We have some of this information posted as well for our residents in New Jersey. Thank you.
I do have the flyers out there, too, if you'd like to post both in English and Spanish.
Great, I will do that, thank you.
All right, thank you so much for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Item number four, Resolution 2021-232, Appointing Police Officers.
Resolution of Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Jason J. Nylon, Tyler J. Walsh, and Daniel A. Beal Jr. as full-time police officers with the Township of Lacy. Do I have a motion, please?
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes.
I would like to call Chief DeBella up to the front of the room.
Good evening, everyone. Before I get started, I just want to thank the mayor and the committee and Veronica for supporting the police department. This is the second time this summer that they've hired police officers, so I know I certainly appreciate it, all our officers in our department certainly appreciate it. And I did receive a call today from Deputy Mayor Giuliano that was unable to be here this evening, and he also wanted to express his gratitude to our staff and our new officers that are being hired tonight. With that, I'd like to welcome all the past and present members of the Lacy Township Police Department, and friends and families of those officers being hired tonight. I've said it a bunch of times before, we couldn't do what we do without the support of our families. You guys are the backbone, backbone of every one of us here. And we all know law enforcement today is different than it was five years ago, 10 years ago, and so forth, so I know I certainly, certainly really do appreciate it. And with that, I'd like to call up Jason Nylon.
From eyes on, as good as they used to be. Jason Nylon is a lifelong resident of Lacy Township. He attended the Lacy Township School District, graduating from Lacy High School in 2007. Jason is a military veteran, has been served in both Syria and Kuwait, 2018 and 2019. While in the military, he's received numerous medals and decorations. Jason is currently in his second enlistment in the United States Army Reserves, where he currently holds the rank of sergeant. Jason is a certified New Jersey EMT and firefighter, and was most recently employed in these positions at Princeton University, specifically for the Princeton Physics Laboratory. If anybody is concerned with local electrical work, he's also a veteran. Jason is married to his wife, Jessica, he has a seven-year-old son and a 10-year-old daughter. Congratulations, Officer.
Jason, next to me. You will place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right, and repeat after me. I, Jason J. Nylon.
I, Jason J. Nylon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of police officer.
Perform all the duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the peoples who help me God.
And the authority of the peoples who help me God.
Congratulations.
Tyler Walsh. Tyler is a lifelong resident of Lacy Township. He attended the Lacy Township School District, graduated from the high school in 2013. Tyler has been attending K University and is actively working towards his criminal justice degree. Tyler is a certified police officer and was most recently employed as an investigator by the Ocean County Sheriff's Department in the Crime Scene Investigation Unit. He was previously employed as a Class II Special Police Officer, right here in Lacy Township, and prior at the Beach Haven Police Department. He also worked part-time as a substitute teacher for the Lacy Township School District. Tyler is currently engaged to his fiancee, Ciara. Congratulations, Officer Walsh, best of luck.
This was a very momentous evening for Tyler. Today is his grandpa's, Ted Glazek's 92nd birthday, and his uncle Tim's 58th birthday, so it's a very happy occasion. I, Tyler J. Walsh.
I, Tyler J. Walsh.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of police officer.
Perform all the duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the peoples who help me God.
Under the authority of the peoples who help me God.
Congratulations.
Could this time open up for comments from the governing body? One more.
One more, we have.
Here we go. Okay.
Daniel Beal Jr. Daniel has resided in Lacy Township for the past 20 years. He attended the Lacy Township School District, also graduating in 2016. He holds a Bachelor of Arts degree in Leadership and Management from Rutgers University. Daniel is a certified Class II Police Officer, graduating number one in his academy class in academics, receiving the high academic award. Huge accomplishment. Daniel was most recently employed by the Point Pleasant Beach Police Department as a Class II Special Police Officer. Daniel comes from a family of first responders, more specifically his father here to my left, holds position of Lieutenant for the Carterhead Fire Department. Well, as a Bureau of Forty, being part of our police department, and wish you and your family nothing but the best.
Thank you.
I, Daniel A. Beal Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of police officer.
Perform all the duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the peoples who help me God.
Under the authority of the peoples who help me God.
Congratulations.
And with apologies to Officer Beal, comments from the committee?
Sure, I'll start. I'm going to save Tyler for last, you'll find that. Jason and Dan, you guys are joining what I consider to be the finest police force in all of the state of New Jersey. So I welcome you, and please keep us safe. Tyler, I want to tell a little story about Tyler. See, Tyler.
Is this going to change his employment status?
No, absolutely not, absolutely not. You see, Tyler is very good friends with my son Logan, and my son Logan got married on Friday, and Tyler was invited to the wedding. However, the next Saturday was his test, and I remember talking to Logan, and Jennifer going over a list, and there was Tyler's name, and it was crossed off. I said, "What? Tyler's not coming?" And Logan, he gets to talk to you, and said, "Why aren't you coming?" And because he was afraid of the reception, he wouldn't be able to take the test on Saturday morning, so he was dedicated to taking that test. So Tyler, welcome, and please keep us safe. Thank you. It's all out.
Daniel, how old are you?
23.
Okay, so basically, the two other officers are lifelong residents, 20 years. Where'd you look for three years before here?
Carterhead.
Okay, well, welcome, you know, thank God you came down here. I love that, born and bred, pretty much born and bred, Lacy Township, educated. We produce the best, and the best come to the Lacy Township. What I really love about this, and I always remark to people when we discuss, you know, police officers, is I don't know any other profession where all your future coworkers, past coworkers, come out to celebrate your employment. So, you know, I don't know, other towns do that. I've been at, in other towns where they sworn in, and this doesn't happen, so I take a lot of pride in that. I know you do a great job, and I wish you all the best. The other thing I also love is the pride I see from the families who are here with you, and even the pride for the people in the audience smiling. I think that everyone's very happy that you're here and here to protect us. Thank you.
Know what they said. I just want to, welcome to the Lacy Police Force. You're joining a great group of guys, and I'll make sure you succeed, and they'll help you succeed as well, and just best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. Yeah, I just want to welcome the new officers. All three have a much better hairline than I do. It's a cruel trick played by God on the bald people, but I digress. Listen, I'm going to tell you, that flopped, guys, that flopped. So I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you, you know, nowadays, police officers, not just law enforcement, departmental health counselor, substitutes counselor, marriage counselor, you're going into domestics, you have people, thankfully not in our town, but you're not as appreciated as you should be. I'm going to tell you what I tell the new folks all the time. I hope God walks with you every single step, because there's a higher power out there, and I want him to be with you and walking with you and keeping us safe. Glad you're all here, thanks for keeping us safe. God bless you. To our wonderful town folk, that's the conclusion of our caucus meeting, unless you are overly excited to listen to and watch some back-and-forth banter, talk about budgets, line items, purchases. You're more than welcome, but if I was you, I'd go to the captain's sin with somebody's cops. So please feel free to go. We'll close this portion of our evening out, and then we will start in with our township meeting. Motion to adjourn, please. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
You're in a bad age.
Congratulations.
Chris, how are you? Everybody's doing great.
Jeff, congratulations, how are you? Good, how about yourself?
Congratulations. Look, you're happy. It's got to be great.
Goodbye.
I don't know what kind.
I mean, he'll tell you what he wants to do, and that's his business here exactly. Yeah, that's the way I am, too. If you want to tell me, tell me.
Down low now.
Yeah.
I think so. I recognize you somewhere, I don't know where.
Hi, Bob. I'm good, Bob.
Okay, that's what I thought. That's what I thought. I knew I recognized.
I was going to say, you guys have a full house for September.
We had.
We haven't met in like, five weeks. Oh, my goodness, I wasn't at any party here.
All right.
People cleared him out with his bad jokes.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press in the Beacon and was posted on bulletin board showing the time and the place of the meeting. We'll salute the flag and our motor silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, First Reading Ordinance 2021-21, authorizing the sale of block 866, lots 11 and 13 to the adjoining property owner.
In order to the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the sale of block 866 of lots 11 and 13 on the municipal tax act map to Andrew and Stephanie Hopkins in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 4812-13B and NJSA 4812-13.2. This is a non-conforming lot being sold to the adjoining property owner, and it must be consolidated with their principal dwelling property for the amount of $10,000. It is off of Forest Avenue in La Opa Hara.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number two, First Reading Ordinance 2021-22, authorizing the purchase of block 1853, lots 20 through 23.
In order to the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the purchase of block 1853, lots 20, 21, 22, and 23 pursuant to NJSA 4812-5. The township is purchasing this lot, this is part of a Phase III for Walters Development Group. This is being purchased through the COA fund, the amount of the purchase is $60,000.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
No.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number three, Second Reading Ordinance 2021-19, amending and supplementing Chapter 178 entitled fees.
In order to the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 178 of the Township Code of the Entitled Fees, so as to amend and supplement Chapter 178, Section 3, entitled fees for youth. These are the fees for the community center, for the nonprofit organizations and groups, for private parties and rentals of those rooms in that facility.
Move it.
Second reading, open the floor to public comment.
See, now making motion to close. Second.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Second reading, item number four, Second Reading Ordinance 2021-20, creating the position of police chaplain.
In order to the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 93 of the Township Code of the Township of Lacy and title of Police Department, so as to establish Article IV entitled Police Chaplain Program. Second reading.
Open the floor to public comment.
See, now making motion to close. Second.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number five, Resolution 2021-233, appointing an assistant municipal Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number six, Resolution 2021-234, awarding contract for the Bamber Lake Basketball and Tennis Court pavement reconstruction.
Resolution Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the Bamber Lake Basketball and Tennis Court pavement reconstruction project to Swift &amp; Sons Incorporated. This is the base bid and the alternate bid number one in the amount of $78,880.25.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number six, Resolution 2021-234, awarding contract for the Bamber Lake Basketball and Tennis Court pavement reconstruction.
Resolution Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the Bamber Lake Basketball and Tennis Court pavement reconstruction project to Swift &amp; Sons Incorporated. This is the base bid and the alternate bid number one in the amount of $78,880.25.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number seven, Resolution 2021-235, awarding contract for the resourcing of Bamber Lake Basketball and Tennis Court and the Gilly Park Tennis Court.
Resolution Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the resourcing of the Bamber Lake Basketball and Tennis Courts and the Gilly Park Tennis Court with, what's that, pro- tenses? I never can say this word, after tenses, to Shoretop Construction. The total amount of the bid is $178,900. So $122,900 is for Bamber, and $56,000 is for Gilly. We were not able to complete, there was three phases to this project, we were not able, based on the dollar amounts in the budget, to complete the whole project. So we're doing base bid and alternates, number one only.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number eight, Resolution 2021-236, awarding a contract for both the two minutes materials.
Resolution Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the award of a contract for the purchase of both the two minutes material to Brick Wall Corporation.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number nine, Resolution 2021-237, awarding a contract for the purchase of sand, gravel, stone, and screen topsoil.
Resolution Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey, awarding contracts for the purchase of sand, gravel, stone, and screen topsoil. This is a two-year contract. This is for us to go and pick up the product and bring it back to our site that we need it, and it's all going to Brick Wall Corporation. There is approximately nineteen different items that we bid for.
Move it. Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number ten, Resolution 2021-238, awarding a contract for the rental of John Deere loaders for the fall, winter, leaf, and snow season.
Resolution Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Jesco Incorporated for the rental of three John Deere 624K loaders with JR-B Quick Disconnect Couplers 2020 models or newer for the fall 2021 leaf collection and the 2021-2022 snow season. We take those rentals in around November 4th, and we bring them back to the Jesco for March 25th of 2022, and the total amount of this contract is $75,000.
Motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number eleven, Resolution 2021-239, authorizing the tax collector to hold an electronic tax sale.
Resolution Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to hold an electronic tax sale, and it is what it is, it's an electronic tax sale, just like you would do on eBay nowadays.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald, I mean, Mayor Kurtolo, hold!
September, nine months in.
I know, nine months in.
Thank you, we all make them. Thank you. Item number twelve, Resolution 2021-240, setting the cost for the tax sale mailings.
Resolution Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey, fixing the cost for in-lu tax sale mailings at $25 per mailing.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald, I mean, Mayor Kurtolo, hold!
September, nine months in.
Wow, I know, nine months in.
Thank you, we all make them. Thank you. Item number twelve, Resolution 2021-240, setting the cost for the tax sale mailings.
Resolution Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey, fixing the cost for in-lu tax sale mailings at $25 per mailing.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item fourteen, Resolution 2021-242, authorizing the placement of a lien on block 1549, lot 46 for property maintenance.
Resolution Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey, accepting certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at 820 Alpine Street, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs in the amount of $71.70. And this is for the property maintenance with the mowing of the lawn.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number fifteen, Resolution 2021-243, authorizing the cancellation of taxes due to 100% Disabled Veteran Exemption.
Resolution Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel 2021 taxes due on a property grant at the 100% Disabled Veterans exemption, and refund the resulting credit balance. This is on block 1606, lot 8.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number sixteen, Resolution 2021-244, authorizing the refund of building department fees.
Resolution Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of a building department fee issued by the Lacy Township Building Department. The property owner is not going through with the solar project, and the amount refunded is $304.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number seventeen, Resolution 2021-245, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number eighteen, Resolution 2021-246, authorizing the payment of township bills. Move it.
Resolution, oh, sorry. Resolution Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $6,413,353.12.
Move it, second. All in favor?
Mr. McDonald?
Yes, and I'm staying on D0400.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
And Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number nineteen, monthly reports.
For the month of August, the municipal clerk's office collected receipts in the amount of $4,906.30. Community development for the month of August collected receipts in the amount of $57,779. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it, second.
Call in favor.
Aye. Item number twenty, motion to approve township meeting minutes of August 12, 2021. Move it, second. All in favor? Aye. Item number twenty-one, motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of August 12, 2021. Move it, second. All in favor? Aye. Item twenty-two, motion to approve raffle license application for the Women's Club of Lacy, La Nocahaber Volunteer Fire Department, Open Arms, and Contact of Ocean and Monmouth County. Move it, second. All in favor? Aye. Item twenty-three, motion to approve bingo license of Lacy Elks Lodge and Lacy Elks Lodge Charitable Association. Move it, second. All in favor? Aye. Comments from the committee? Committee man McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things here, I do want to go over with regards to our recycling. This is from, this is an August 23rd letter from Gary Quinn, the director. I'm just gonna read a couple of paragraphs here. "The county program now accepts paperboard and chipboard, including cereal boxes, food and tissue boxes, paper towel and toilet paper rolls, etc., in our curbside recycling program. The aluminum foil and trays that have been cleaned may also be recycled." Curbside, this is all brand-new. "Additionally, all one, number one, number two, and number five plastics shall now be accepted curbside. This includes butter and yogurt containers, fast-food beverage cups, and microwave food containers, plastic lids, and clam shells." This is, this is good. Is this up on the?
Yes, we have, yeah.
This is up on our website? Okay, so it's up on our website. Anybody has any questions, give Public Works a call about what can and cannot be recycled. This is good news for us, because less stuff gets rejected. Back to school. To mask or not to mask? To vaccinate or not to vaccinate? Lot of questions going around. And our esteemed governor came out with a letter, and basically, well, basically, he threatened us that we passed a resolution against what he wanted. But I'm going to stand here tonight and tell you that whatever the school board decides to do, they have my support 100%. I just hope we don't close the schools. Work that stuff out. What else I got here? Oh, the Gilly Park and the Bamber Lake, these are projects that are way, way overdue. I happened to stop down at the pickleball court a couple of weeks ago. I didn't realize how bad Gilly, Gilly Tennis Courts were, and it's a good thing we'd be doing those. And then Bamber, that's been neglected for years, and years and years, and so they're kind of a redheaded stepchild out there, we kind of sometimes forget about them, Jim, I apologize. But hopefully, we can get that up and running, and get that park up and running then too. Also, I want to congratulate Heather. She's been over there in the finance department, back and forth, but can already see the input that she's making, and the strides that she's making in that department. So we've got a good one there, and hopefully, we're gonna keep her for a very, very long, long time. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Committee man Dykoff?
So I'm gonna only talk about one thing tonight, and that's 9/11.
That's what I forgot. I knew it. I was gonna remind you.
I got it right here, I got it right here. 9/11, I forgot it.
Yeah, you just couldn't read it, because you-
I didn't have my glasses on.
Nah, you know, you know we all, we're all, it's in our minds. It's everywhere you look. And these are strange times, they really are strange times. COVID, the economy, Afghanistan, schools, Mr. McDonald talked about the governor, but today, the president imposed new restrictions as it relates to companies which have more than 100 employees, federal employees, basically, no if, ands, or buts, you must be vaccinated, you do not have the option of vaccination or testing. I don't know where we're going, but I gotta tell you, I'm a little scared. But anyway, 9/11. Who remembers where they were 20-something years ago? I know exactly where I was, almost like it was yesterday. And I can remember what we did to try and see it on this little make-believe portable TV that we tried to hook up, and I remember the phone call from my wife telling me a plane hit the World Trade Center, and I immediately said, "Oh, had to be a small plane that got caught in the fog or something." And it wasn't, because two seconds later, she said, "Oh, my God, another plane hit." And it just, it just snowballed from there, so. Seeing a lot of families lately on the TV, you know, where were they 20 years ago, we lost our families, and now they grown. I think one of the most interesting ones that I saw, a small little excerpt of a program, if any of you remember when President Bush then was notified, one of his aides walked in and whispered in his ear. So what they had was, had all the students who were in that class, and they were interviewing them. And of course, you know, 20 years later, they're all grown adults, you know, and how it's affected them. It's pretty, you know, pretty heartbreaking, but that's it. Keep everyone in your prayers, let's hope for the best in our future, and I'd like to say, we'll get through this, but it's not a wonder. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Committee man Kennas?
Thank you, Mayor. Excellent segue, Mark.
I like that.
Yeah, I was debating whether to talk about 9/11 tonight or not, but I did, or gone to. Yeah, so this Saturday does mark the anniversary of 9/11, and I, like Mark, I've been a lot more reading than watching, but I've been reading a lot of stories, survival stories from people that were either at or near the Trade Center that day, and the sheer shock and terror that they must have seen and felt, it's hard to even put yourself in their shoes. But I started to think about that days, you know, 20 years ago, and think the dichotomy of then and now. And back then, the entire country pulled together, you know, for a common purpose, and everyone was proud to be an American, we had the support of all the world leaders, you know, the entire world was behind us. And now, 20 years later, things couldn't be more different. The divisions internally over vaccines and masks, race, gender, money, couldn't be further apart. Our world standing has withered, to put it mildly. Our recent isolationist and antagonistic worldview, coupled with our ineffective and weak withdrawal from Afghanistan, speaks volumes to our allies and enemies. So I would hope that one day, the aftermath of 9/11 reminds us, not only does the world need a strong America, but that Americans need a strong America. Those are my comments.
Very good. I too want to remember 9/11, you know, everybody knew somebody, especially in our area and the surrounding areas, just north of us and south of us and west of us. I was at Ocean County College this morning for a remembrance event, and it was very strange but telling to see young people eulogize those that were lost, and they weren't alive yet. So it was comforting to see that history is still being taught, and they're doing a good job of it over there at OCC. The, you know, when I think of 9/11, I think of the buildings, but I really think of Flight[1503.51] The, you know, when I think of 9/11, I think of the buildings, but I really think of Flight 93. And the only thing that those folks had in common was that they were on a manifest on a flight together. They were regular folks like all of us. They knew what was happening. They were getting garbled phone messages. They banded together from different parts of the country, different races and ethnicities. They got a drink cart, and they took that plane down. And the courage that that must have taken. See, that was something that trained military terrorists couldn't count on or quantify. It was the American spirit. So those mass murderers were defeated that day in that Pennsylvania field, or else there would have been another hit that we'd all be talking about and eulogizing right now. So it's that spirit. It's in this room. It's on Lacy Road. It's in Montana. It's everywhere. And it's what makes you proud. If there's one thing I'd like people to take away from that day, it is that flight and those folks that often go unnamed. They were heroes as well. And you could talk about it for the longest time, but we'll transition. I want to thank Heather for the 5K. She did a wonderful job. She gets, you know, Heather Scanlon gets more folks to go out and run that race in her wonderful volunteers. This year, again, I ran. I did finish. I was beaten by every 70-year-old, every 60-year-old. I gave out every ribbon for people 20, 30 years my senior. But I finished. I don't know if I embarrassed us or not, but hats off to all those folks that worked really, really hard. I do and constantly attend chambers of commerce all around the area. I advocate for our businesses incessantly. I offer them all the resources of the county health department. I bring them into our community health improvement plan. It's an easy sell. Healthy businesses mean people that call out less, and it means more profitable businesses. I'll close with this, because this was pretty touching and pretty telling. Deputy Mayor Giuliano and I, we headed to Community Hall about a week ago. It was filled to capacity. There were veterans and those that were remembering those lost from addiction and overdose. It was overdose awareness day across the nation. Last year, we had about 60,000 people overdose. This year, in 2020, that number's up substantially. It's a little over 93,000 overdoses. We have virtually no southern border, 200,000 people a month coming over, fentanyl coming in, confiscations, bad policy at the top levels. That's not a political statement. That's a statement of fact. And I'm talking about the presidency. Through it all, the resiliency of our town, we enjoy some of the highest real estate values that we've ever had, the highest in our history. That continues on. So I make an appeal, and I will continue to make an appeal up until our day of voting on this non-binding referendum. I'm asking every parent, coach, and teacher, and concerned citizen, to really consider strongly to not let recreational marijuana be a part of our landscape here. We are one of a small handful of folks that is putting it on referendum. If it comes here, you don't have to listen to me. There's a long list of people that, including those some up here on the dais, our police chief, our school board, educators, coaches, parents, that have spoken out against this. If we're here for public health, public safety, if we sued Purdue Pharma for what they did with opioids, let's not become a tourism destination for marijuana. Let's keep Lacy great. I want to thank you for your time. I'll open the floor to public comment. Yes, sir.
Yeah, really.
Yeah, thanks.
You're way too close.
Good evening, for the record, Jim Lutellier.
Been complaining about that mic for 20 years.
I know. I told you to get a gooseneck.
Yeah, I remember that.
So Jim Lutellier, Lacy Township. I concur with all your thoughts today about the various situations, praise for the new officers. I can't believe you're off the badge 119.
I know. How many is that between you and them?
I was 38.
I know. I know. I know.
People, you know, explain to people what that means. So basically, that means you were the 38th, you were the 38th officer hired, and as we hire new ones, we just add a number. So 119, there'd be 100.
There's 81 in between him and them.
Yep, so that's what, you know.
And I only retired in 2005.
I know. I know.
Hey, Jim, you're old.
I stopped having birthdays usually. Anyway, I'd like to discuss some of the issues that were talked about here and some issues. The mask, this still, and again, I'm a firm believer not only in the federal constitution, but state constitution and home rule, is home rule. And for this mayor, for a governor, to threaten this bare body that if he took actions or resolution is the next step to dictatorship.
It's not that step. It is dictatorship.
And also, for the purpose of the mask, most people, and there was a nice article I read today early this morning, and the doctors were talking about. You have to have exemptions for kids who, one, autistic, that can't wear the mask. Number two, all these people with their designer masks, those designer masks do nothing but create more germs. You have to have the, was it R95?
N95.
N95 mask. I got boxes of them. You have to also look at individuals, the age, the retention. To put a mask on, you're not going to see me on an airplane ever again, because I ain't going to wear a mask. The COVID thing, all the science shows, young kids are not susceptible to it, very few cases. Very interesting study out of Israel, 700,000 people tested that had gotten COVID before getting the vaccination, had the disease, and versus those who had the vaccinations. If you look at this study, and John Hopkins just reported on it two days ago, Rutgers reported on it, the Cleveland Institute reported on it. People who had coronavirus, and I'm one of them, don't need a vaccine because it's up to 13 to 20 times greater, more effective. And if you had low to moderate symptoms, according to the studies in Washington University in St. Paul, that it goes into your bone marrow. Once it is in your bone marrow, that's a natural immunity for life. Unlike, you know, chickenpox, you've got to get re-vaccinated as you get older, otherwise you get the shingles. All right, so there's a lot of science and more science coming out. And when you take these studies out of Israel, and it all shows that, again, people that got the vaccination and three weeks later got it, it was the same as getting one shot, because your body hadn't gone through the immune system. Now they're saying it should have been 30 months, or three months to four months. So the science keeps evolving. So we got politicians, and they were all criticizing Biden for getting out, excuse me, I'll be respectful, President Biden, for getting out ahead of the science, coming out with all these mandates. So now, if you're a company with 100 employees, you've got to have vaccination. But if you've got 99 employees, you know, so I fire them. I mean.
You're a problem solver, Jim.
Thank you. I went to school for that.
Don't tell HR.
So enough of that, but I think this board should do what they feel is right. And I think the Board of Education, you have to look at the individual students, their conditions, and same with the vaccination, mandate vaccination for all students. There's children that have reactions to vaccines from day one, okay? Now you're going to give them a vaccine that can kill them? So there's a lot to think about, and I hope that you guys do what you think is right and not worry about what the governor says. People don't care about taxes. Why care about taxes? And that's why you have such a problem with people being able to afford homes and rent homes. The other thing I want to talk about, and I take it serious, those who serve on the planning board with me has heard me talk about this multiple times. You opened this meeting, in the previous meeting, with a pledge of allegiance. Each and every one of you took an oath of office, which is required by Article, or Article 6, Clause 3 of the Constitution of the United States, that every elected, every appointed official in this country, federal, state, county, municipal, must take an oath of office. The state constitution requires you to take an oath of office. These officers here tonight, the first thing they swore to uphold was the Constitution of the United States. So when the state legislators, offense, Mr. Connors, pass the legislation that the governor signed in, that we're dealing with marijuana now, should it be legal, should it be medical marijuana, should it be, or shouldn't be? The supremacy clause, Article 6, Clause 2, when federal law and state law conflict, federal law is supreme. Now, if you took an oath of office and meant it to uphold the Constitution of the United States, you have to, regardless of your personal feelings about it, oppose any legalization of marijuana used whether for medical purpose or recreation purpose in this town, in this state. I know you have a referendum coming up, the meeting that was discussed. I didn't come because I was sick, and with everything, I didn't want to have anybody fear. Why was a resolution put on to demand Congress take appropriate actions to research and legalize marijuana, either for medical or recreational? That's where this debate belongs, in the Congress, not amongst you, not amongst the state, because it's federal law. Not only you have the Drug Enforcement Act, and there's multiple acts, and then anybody who was at the meeting heard me talk, and the doctor who, for the medical marijuana at the industrial park, even acknowledged. Marijuana today has been genetically altered, so it's 30 times greater potential potency than it was in the 60s and 70s. Now, I already seen it in other towns where I stopped for a couple beers or whatever. There are people in the parking lot just smoking marijuana, and then they're coming in a bar and drinking. Well, anybody knows if you mix alcohol and drugs, the synergistic reactions could be 60 times greater than the effect of either one separately. Now, you also know, as we just talked, I got a total of 29 years in law, I've spent nearly 26 here. I told for the Justice Department for eight years. I was an instructor for the Police Training Commission. And I was police director in Highstown for three years. And I've been involved, not only with the hundreds of arrests for drugs, marijuana, but the effects of them. And the reason, according to the federal government restrictions, the reason marijuana is still a Schedule I narcotic is because of THC that's in it, and it's now 30 times more potent than when it was introduced as a law, is it's hallucinogenic. So, you know, people, you're furious when they first smoke. I listened to 101.5 when it first went on the ballot before, you know, for the last statewide election. And people are going in, I drive better after smoking marijuana than I, because I'm more relaxed. I feel, you know, I'm not as tense. Well, no. I'm sorry. That's what leads them. Some of the worst car crashes I've had as a police officer were people who smoked marijuana and drinking alcohol. Now, here's another thing you have to understand. Years ago, we were able to just bring people in, and they were under the influence. We checked them out. They showed the symptoms. But the lawyers got creative and went to the legislators. And now you have to have what's known as a drug recognition expert, DRE. You're talking hundreds of hours of training and field observation before they get certified. So if you allow more people to smoke marijuana openly, they're going to be blatant. They're going to do it like I see in different bars, smoking or, you know, leaving houses. Your regular officers are not going to be able to charge them. Because you only got one DRE, if I recall. I don't think we ever had a second one. I don't even know if we currently have one. Nate Gibson was the last DRE that I was aware of. So you cannot process them for trafficking in influence, because marijuana stays in blood for four days. So state legislators didn't even think about that, the ones that supported that. So that's a whole open field. But I'm telling you that, and I've been around. I grew up in the streets of North. I've seen every drug used, and people use everything. But I'm going to tell you, if in the 60s and 70s, I saw the effects on it, in the 80s and 90s, as a patrol officer, I saw the effects on it, and now it's 30 times more potent, that's not recreational. That's addiction. And if you listen to the tapes, the meeting where the doctor and I went back and back and forth, and I questioned him on a lot of this. The other thing is the medical marijuana. I asked him, are you going to have gummies, edibles? Because the legislatures didn't approve that. And he brought up his concern. Well, I got people with throat cancer, lung cancer, and the only relief is smoking. That's what gave it to me. So you're going to put that cartridge into lungs while you suffer from lung cancer or throat cancer. Recreational marijuana, look what happened when Colorado first opened it. Flood gates opened, and you're correct. It opened up in Colorado. Everybody moved out there. The homeless population exploded in beautiful Colorado, that you don't want to even go skiing there anymore. And it created problems with crime. This is serious. It's not about personal belief. It's about you have an obligation to live up to that oath that each and every one of you took to support the Constitution of the United States. And it doesn't matter what the state of New Jersey did. I'm disappointed that when Barr was the Attorney General, he didn't start locking up these governors for being drug kingpins. I mean, you know, that's the way I feel about it.
Something, my feeling is, I was put up here to help protect this town. Some things are bigger than politics, and there are people up here that disagree with me. I don't badmouth them. I just disagree with them.
And we can respectfully disagree.
We can respectfully disagree.
But you cannot disagree or ignore your oath of office that you took. And if you do ignore it, then you should step down or be removed.
I honor my oath.
And because that's your bond. I mean, that's why it was in the constitution from the beginning. But then, when the constitution was amended with the Bill of Rights, the 10th Amendment made it very clear. The rights not reserved to the federal governor, nor prohibited to the state, belongs to the state. Well, guess what? The federal government reserved the right under Food and Drug Administration Act, under Drug Enforcement Act, to control marijuana and others controlled dangerous substances. Actually, it's got a Schedule I through Schedule V and Schedule III on narcotics. How do I notice? I used to be a licensed drug researcher when I was training K-9 dogs. I was certified by federal government and state of New Jersey. I'm a former member of the New Jersey Drug Association, Drug Enforcement Officers Association. I beg you, regardless of what the voters say here, because why are we having a referendum? They just voted on the last general election. We know the majority of people in Lacy Township voted in favor of it.
But they didn't vote to sell it or grow it here recreationally.
Should it be legal, I believe.
Yes, it should be legal.
And I agree. But again, if it's going, the pressure should not be on you. It should not have been on the state legislators. It should be on Congress. And why is it that? Yeah, I could.
Jim, I don't feel any problem. I'm taking a politically unpopular position. I know that Lacy Road is going to turn into a superhighway, because we have better access than any other town that's entertaining it. We will be one of a handful of towns.
Control, the Democrats, who are liberal, that talk about it should be legal. Well, they control both houses and the White House. Make it legal. But they won't. They don't even introduce it.
It's the perfect marriage pot in the Democrat Party. It takes your drive. You may become, you may hurt your marriage. You may become unemployed. You'll be on a large S program. Welcome to the Democrat Party. I don't want to see that happen here.
I agree, but again, it's not about personal beliefs. It's about the rule of law. And little by little, state by state, you see the rule of law going away. California, perfect example. Look at the homeless population out there. But when they legalize marijuana, and then all they talked about was the great tax revenue. Well, guess what? When you put $200 an ounce tax, all you did was increase your street value of illegal drugs, because people buy it.
I made that argument. It falls on deaf ears sometimes. Hopefully, the people watching.
That's what I'm reaching out to people, and I hope they understand. But it all goes back to, regardless of them, you have an obligation to uphold your oath of office. I did as police officers. These three police officers tonight, as well as everyone else, swore allegiance to that and the state and the laws of both, but they're putting their life on the line, just like the veterans that served in the armed forces overseas, took an oath of office. All I'm asking you, regardless of your personal feelings, don't make it legal for recreational marijuana in this town, because you're asking for the biggest problems you're ever going to see. You know what? If you, I don't know what else to say about it.
I don't know. We're at the upside.
If 29 years of experience and my belief in the constitution, and hopefully, you all believe the same, I do, the constitution, supreme law of the land, and there's nothing more sacred than my word and my oath. And I piss off a lot of people, but I stand by it, and I'll continue to stand by it. And I just hope you guys stand by yours, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Any other?
My turn. Jimmy, forgot to lower this.
I think you could just, yeah, move the arm.
So it's part of the Lacy D.
Regina descends of Sunset Drive Sunrise Beach, speaking as a private citizen. I have a few questions and a comment. Item two, Mr. Dyko, if you voted no, may I ask, what was the reason?
Affordable housing. I'm against any additional affordable housing we've built.
Oh, okay, I follow. All right, I got it. I wasn't sure, you know, the train of thought there, but now I got it.
No problem.
Okay. My second question is, I had emailed Ms. Larray. Are you considering a resolution like Barney get passed to raise the veterans' property tax exemption from 250 to 500? You just didn't have it on tonight's agenda, or?
No, I didn't have it, but by the time that it made the circle around with the peers.
Yeah, because Mr. Billy was real concerned about, you know, having other towns pass the same resolution. Pete, that was great. You did the 5K. I was really proud of you that you made it. We were cheering you on there. We were hoping.
You were, yeah.
It was a great day. The weather was perfect, and I think over 250 people ran or something.
It just seemed like half the town was remarkable.
There was a lot of people there. As everyone already mentioned, everyone should take a moment on Saturday morning to think about what happens in New York City, Washington, and Shanksville. I don't know if you've ever been to Shanksville, but I went there twice, and I left in tears both times. It was almost as bad as watching the Trade Centers go down, even though it's just an empty field of green with a big hole in it. You just have a vision of what happened there, and it was just so beyond sad. And it's a national monument, and there's a visitor center, and there's a lot of information in there. So if you're ever on the Pennsylvania Turnpike out going west towards Pittsburgh, it's worth about, you know, 40, 45-minute diversion off the main highway to get up into Shanksville and see that national memorial. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor. Second.
We're going to do Resolution 247, a resolution attached to Lacy County, Russia State, authorizing the convenium executive session to discuss matters of personnel, contractual matters, and matters of real estate.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dyko?
Yes.
Mayor Carrick.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Move it. Move it. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Go for the business.